10:45, restart the meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Morning.
We are moving into the fiscal year 2019 to 2023 Utilities Capital Improvement Program and Operation Fund Budget Status Update. Kristin Simeone, Interim Finance Director. The information we're going to show you was presented to the Utility Advisory Board, so we're going to start with the construction funds, just so you can see how, what flows into it from the various sources, and then we'll go into the operations fund. This is the Utilities Construction Fund pro forma for fiscal year 19 to 2023, and basically the majority of the funds come from Utilities OMNR Fund. There are certain projects that we have funding coming from sewer impacts or wastewater impacts, and we have the Loop project going on, and it's being funded by wastewater impacts, but because there's a large upfront cost, it's being reimbursed over several years. And we'll go into some more detail on that particular project in just a moment. And then it just shows you the type of projects that we're going through, so you have your total revenues equaling your total expenditures. And again, when we go over the Loop project, you'll see we're going to be using some of our reserves from our, the $1.12 million that we use for our R and R. It's set aside every year, and whatever is left over each year, we've been accumulating, and we were hoping to say, hey, we won't need to fund that this year, we'll use up the rest of that R and R. However, because of the Loop project coming in with additional expenditures for a lift station, we suggest using that money up right now and then reimbursing it from the wastewater impacts, so that's what you see with that R and R reserve at the end. So these are the projects that you are used to seeing for the R and R, and we have not really had any changes. The only particular line item under gravity sewer replacement, they're in fiscal year '22 and '23, they're decreasing it a little bit there, but they're increasing their other line item for lift station renewal and replacement. Any questions? The next one is the prior year's funding, so that's fiscal year 18 that we're working on, so they currently have their GIS Atlas mapping project ongoing, and then the advanced metering infrastructure, so we just want to point that out, that those are still ongoing projects, they'll probably cross over the fiscal year, as they won't be completed at the end of this fiscal year. Going under the wastewater projects, you've got wastewater treatment plant tank coating in fiscal year '21. We have the wastewater treatment plant permit renewal, $75,000, along with the deep injection well permit renewal, $75,000, and those are usually planned every five years, so you'll see that in, currently in '19. The mechanical integrity test, that kind of goes along with the deep injection well, that gets done between fiscal year 2020. The wastewater treatment plant deep injection well pump replacements, they had three pumps to replace, this final $40,000 is the third pump in fiscal year '19. Wastewater treatment plant expansion, they currently, in fiscal year '18, have started the study, and we don't know what's going to come out of that study, so we have started putting some money into the budget to set aside for the expansion of the plant. Whether that amount is the right amount yet, we won't know, but, and if it's in the right years, but that's what we're have there, is some placeholder money. And then the Loop Force Main extension, and this is where we're having the extra $1.5 million for the lift station, and Tom can talk to you about that, if you need to have any more details on it, it's included in the packet and the detail sheets, but any questions? Yes?
Is that the reason for the increase to 3.3 is the lift station?
Yeah, what happened was when we initially designed and looked at designing the Loop, Jones Loop Force Main, prior to modeling it, we thought we could rehabilitate the existing lift station, and that would be sufficient, but prudence going forward suggested that we, we could not, we needed a bigger capacity, the capability of bigger pumps to handle all the potential flows in that area, so we could have come back and done that as a secondary project later on, but it made a whole lot more sense to get the easement, to get everything we needed to complete that work with the force main itself.
Okay, okay, I was wondering, because it just seemed like, wow, we went from 1.8 to 3.3, and it's like...
Yes, yes, and, and the city manager has very recently helped us acquire an easement to put the lift station in the pipeline in, we'd originally asked Charlotte County to go in there right of way, they weren't crazy about the idea, so it's better off, and now we've secured an easement, and that, that legal transfer is happening as we speak.
How, how close are we to getting our permits?
We have all of the permits, we have to do a modification right now to the permit to include the new easement, because it's a slight adjustment to the exact location of the lift station, as well as the pipeline. We anticipate that once we have that easement, and we've, we've corrected that and sent it back out to the review agencies, it should happen pretty quick. We hope to, and our goal is to be out to bid by July, late July or early September, out to bid for the project itself.
Okay, sooner the better.
Sooner the better, I totally agree, yes. Well, we finally got the Army Corps of Engineers permit that we were awaiting about two weeks ago, but we have to modify that slightly because of the change of the location due to the easement.
So the question was asked to me, what is the difference between the impact fees and the connection fees? Obviously, impact fees have to go for new growth, I get that, but where do the connection fees go when, when new people hook in? Where do those monies go?
Sharon Nippenberg, Controller. The connection fees are just cost of operation, so it's, it's the cost of the meter, it's the cost to have it all hooked up and set up in the system, that's a, that's a minor fee compared to the impact fees are actually, you say for growth, but we're talking utility impact fees now, and those, we've already built our plants for growth, so now they're helping us pay the debt on those plants, and they're helping us pay for these new expansion lines, as they're identified that the old line is too small, we need to put in a bigger line, so that, that's the larger cost, is the impact fees.
So the connection fees basically just go into the operation of being part, now you're part of the system, so that's your fee to get into the system? Correct, okay. Gary?
I just want to compliment staff again, because this is another example of the future vision proactive of doing it beforehand rather than have to redo it later. That's been a mindset that we've seen on staff all along, and it's continuing, and I just think that I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, and all the credit goes to Steve Adams and his group, you know, he, he has, he's pretty long sighted, so it was upon his recommendation...
They're happening out there, so we need to get digging.
Yes, absolutely, and it will occur, and he's Mr. Pump, yeah.
Thank you. So now we have our water projects, and for water projects, we're still going over the RO project. At the last meeting, we approved going forward with the construction, awarding that contract. The, the biggest thing I want to point out here on this project, in our last budget, fiscal year '18 budget, we had projected that we would get $3.9 million from, for the additional amount over our original $32.2 million budget from SWIFTMUD funding, additional grant funding, and that the city, or utilities, I should say, would fund the other $3.9 million. At this time, although we are still working to get that grant, it may not happen, so alternatively, we have the State Revolving Loan Fund, the SRF loan. That particular grant loan is for additional funds, so we could fund it out of that particular funding source. Then we have our Bow Harbor Pressure Study, $150,000 in fiscal year '20. The Hendrickson Dam Inspection and Rehabilitation and Maintenance Program, that's $25,000, scheduled every other year, when funds aren't used, they do carry it over in case they do need to do some work in a future year. The hydro biological monitoring plan is $75,000 in fiscal year 2020. We have elevated tank coating, and those are programmed every few years, so they do have $150,000 scheduled for fiscal year '19, and the SCU tank coating is $200,000 in fiscal year 2020. Any questions on any of these projects?
Gary?
Not a question, just want to make the statement regarding the, the grant money for the RO. In the previous councils, prior to this council, when the RO plant was considered and the project went forward, the numbers worked for not having, whether we got the grants or not, so the grants are additional funds that are to our benefit completely, but this project was going to go forward, and, and rightfully so, without these funds, so I thank SWIFTMUD for their assistance, and just wanted everybody to be clear historically, this is a very good viable project in the long term for Pottengorda.
Yes.
Although the numbers are very big.
We, we don't like telling SWIFTMUD that we were going to go ahead and do this project with or without them.
Well, they know already.
No, we want them.
It's making it very difficult for us to get any more grant money other than what...
I apologize, then.
That's okay.
Thank you. Any questions left on the construction fund? Nope. So we're going to move over to the Utilities Operation Fund, and we provided you the five-year pro forma. So this is just taking a look preliminary what we have for fiscal year '19, and based off of what we have in fiscal year '19, how fiscal years '20, '21, '22, and '23 would look. I'm going to go into some more detail as we go along, but we can flip back to the pro forma as needed, just to see where everything's at, so you'll see all of our assumptions and why certain things have changed from previous years. So the first thing we'll do is go over the revenues, and we do not show any rate increases from fiscal year '19 through 2023. We're estimating a 0.5% growth, that's probably a little low, but we try to be conservative, especially when we include the consumption usage in there, which is based on, we currently base it on a three-year average. Again, it can fluctuate so much from year to year based on many factors, so that's what's in there right now. Again, we are assuming the SWIFTMUD grant revenue for the full 50% funding of the RO project, but alternatively, we could also use the SRF loan financing. In fiscal year '19 through 2021, we have the wastewater impact transfer for the balance on the original $1.8 million of the Jones Loop Force Main project, because that all came from the operations fund in this fiscal year when we transferred it over to Utilities Construction, so those are on the 1.8. The additional funds will go right back to the construction fund. And then fiscal year 2020 to 2023 is the portion of the debt service that we feel is growth-related, coming from water impact fee transfers to start helping with that debt service that we expect to start in fiscal year 2020. On the expense side, we do have a 1.25 FTE increase. We have an engineering GIS technician, which was in our plan last year to start in fiscal year '19, so it was presented previously, but we just wanted to remind you that that one is in there. And in the wastewater treatment plant, they have a part-time clerk that they would like to increase the hours from 20 per week to 29 per week.
And if I could just add to that, that GIS position is actually a position that the Utilities Department had, and that we, it has been vacant since the downturn, it was an engineering technician position that, that we've had vacant and we did not fill, so it's not, it's a new position, yes, in terms of funding, but in the, in the total headcount, it's been there for quite a while.
So what, what, when you say GIS, are they mapping out the lines, what are, what are they doing?
Yes, all of that, they're going to work with the, the city's new GIS person who's coming onboard with IT to build the, to help build the, and set up the architecture to map and to locate, you know, to put in, in three-dimensional mapping, hydrants, pipelines, valves, all of the things that we currently have paper maps for...
That Rikini knows in his head.
That Rick knows in his head, Rick built most of it, so we're going to have to break his head open, no, I'm, I'm just kidding. It is to digitalize all of the, all of the wealth of information we have currently in institutional knowledge and on paper, it's very, very important. It's a project the city manager and I have worked on for quite a few years to get it, get it started and get it going, yes.
Excellent, good.
Thank you.
Under the personnel, they have the same assumptions as the general fund, which we went over at the last council meeting, so I won't reiterate those. Operations were per departmental request, and they stayed within the same guidelines as the other divisions for general fund. You will see an increase in computer overhead per the IT budget increases, again, that were approved in the last council meeting, and the general liability insurance was at a 5% estimate increase currently, and capital outlays per departmental requests. We have the continued use of current revenue and operating reserves to fund the five-year CIP. We did delay the $1.5 million contribution for the pipeline project to fiscal year 2020 to coincide when we think the RO project will be completed. Debt service, again, was also delayed a little bit, it will start in fiscal year 2020 now. It includes the $15,650,000 from the original loan budget, and again, we increased the debt service on the off chance that we, you know, if we don't get the SWIFTMUD funding, what would our pro forma look like, so the debt service was increased to include the $3.9 million. And then also, if we think we might be using the State Revolving Loan Fund, that also increases our required reserve, so that's also included in there. Our current policy is to maintain at least a $3.1 million operating reserve, and we also have the $1.5 million R and R capital reserve that was previously established for bonded debt covenant. And then just to go over considerations that are still kind of outstanding within the Utilities Division, is there is a pay plan study that's going to be coming back to council in a future meeting to talk about the implementation options. You have the volatility of water and wastewater revenues based on various conditions and various other factors. There's a Septic to Sewer Master Plan, which I believe is being presented today, and then we have the wastewater treatment plant expansion, information that we're waiting on to see where that's going to come in, and a Riverside Drive wastewater project, and that'll be coming back at a future time as well, but there is a, although there would be assessments for that area, there would be some infrastructure that the city would also have to expend. Any questions?
Questions for Kristin?
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we are moving into our unfinished business, and the first item is reconsideration of City Council Directive for Development of Draft Guidelines for City Center Increased Building Height. And let me just start by saying, since we have gone to the Commission on Ethics, and we basically have a non-answer from them at this point, we did do a formal request to go to a hearing of the commission. Right now, what we have is basically an informal opinion, and so based on the fact that it's a non-answer, I feel like it is, you know, that is available to me, and I feel like it would really help anything moving forward, because we've had council members before me during my time that own property in town and around town, and I think it needs to be resolved in a formal matter. So with that, I will just, in an abundance of caution, not be participating.
Okay. Well, I brought this forward because I was the one that arbitrarily threw out 84 feet in a previous discussion, along with a number of other topics that we were discussing, which had to do with architectural accoutrements, the two-story requirement versus a one-story requirement, setbacks, et cetera. Unfortunately, it seemed to me that the, the number that I threw out, which was arbitrary and only meant for a conversation and nothing more, has clouded the conversation of the other constituents that I think is just as important, and since we've also elected to go to a, a consulting firm to help us sort out through these things, I think it would be wise for us to, prudent for us to ask staff to not give us the formal presentation that we've asked them to do, and not worry about talking about what the height should be, although I still think we should have general conversations among ourselves, among our citizens groups, and then as we go forward with the consultant on those types of things. And this is consistent, I believe, with the presentation that I had given several weeks ago, and several citizens meetings that I've had that were impromptu in various homes, et cetera. It also came to, to my attention, historically, that by asking potential developers to come to us for a variance over 50 feet, that it may also offer opportunities for the, for the city, and the one example that I pointed out was the Four Point Sheraton, in the process of that negotiation, they also included the construction costs for that portion of the Harbor Walk, and that was to the benefit of the city. So with that, I'm asking that my fellow council members reconsider taking the, the concept of 84 feet off the table, along with, as we continue forward, to work with a consultant to help us sort through, through these issues. I would caution us, as we said also in CRA, these are things we don't want to procrastinate on, and so that we need to be vigilant, so that we can get these, these issues sorted out, and, and so that we can protect the, the sweet little environment that we happen to enjoy here, but still move forward with appropriate growth, so that we can also ensure our viability in the future. So anyway, that's how I want to open the discussion.
Gary, you're very good for bringing up subjects that are very good for conversation. With this said, part of this coming up, I, I think that it's brought up with the opinion that David's opinion about this is one that we can disregard. The problem is, is that his advice to us is substantiated by well-established case law in regards to quasi judicial hearings, because if we have a variance, it's going to be a quasi judicial hearing. There are four major cases in which city councils have voted based on popularity rather than on competent substantial evidence, and in each case, the cities lost when decisions were challenged. After my first council meeting, I, I realized personally my deficiency in knowledge on quasi judicial hearings, and so I actually went and had special training at the League of Cities in regard to this, just to be able to be more knowledgeable about this. And, and with this, I think that we, as a body, have to do a better job of sharing with citizens what our actual role is during quasi judicial hearings, because there's a perception that when we vote in these hearings, that it has to be, that it is based on perceived popularity rather than qualified evidence, and it's very apparent that not only do we owe the public accurate information on our duties and responsibilities, also as council members, we also need to have an accurate understanding of what our role is as well. And so unlike a legislative hearing like we have in our normal business, in a quasi judicial hearing, the question is not what we want to do, it is does this application do what is required to do? Meaning that if we like a project and evidence exists that it meets regulatory requirements, we can vote for it. If we don't like a project and it meets regulatory requirements, we must vote for it, and if we like a project and it does not meet the regulatory requirements, we must not vote for it. Regarding our decisions in quasi judicial hearings, if the public does not like the outcome of the decision, the issue is actually this thing right here, our comprehensive plan, this, this is when we have quasi judicial hearings, this is, this is what we have to vote based on, it's not whether we like the project or not, and I think part of it, we've not done a good enough job to share with you what our actual role is in this regard, and I think some, some of the feelings we have in the community come from a lack of us being able to really share this with you properly, and I think that this is very important. Now, coming back to this aspect of us returning to a policy of variances for height applications, because an applicant chooses to place themselves out of compliance for regulations, our decisions ultimately to approve or disapprove are arbitrary, therefore, and the problem is, we can't make arbitrary decisions in quasi judicial hearings, and so it's like in the story of the emperor, you know, wears new clothes, where the emperor's naked, and, and only the little boy has the courage to say, you know, sir, you're naked, but David's like the one who's saying, you know, we're about to get naked, but I'm trying to tell you, it's like, no, we, we don't want to hear this, but I want to give every, every one of us, I have those four cases, and I'll just read a, a brief on each one, and you can pass one to everybody. I'll, I'll get this so you know, just, just basically for each case, I'll give four cases so you understand where we're coming from with this. In the City of Apopka versus Orange County, in quote, "The objections of a large number of residents in the affected neighborhood are not of sound basis for the denial of a permit. The quasi judicial function of a board of adjustment must be exercised on a basis of facts adduced. Numerous objections by adjoining landowners may not properly be given a cumulative effect. While the facts disclosed by objecting neighbors should be considered, the courts have said that a mere poll of neighboring landowners does not serve to assist the board in determining whether the exception applied is consistent with the public convenience or welfare, or whether it will tend to devalue our neighboring property." In the City of Naples versus Central Plaza of Naples, the court found that the city's evidence did not substantially convoid the evidence presented by the appealing, concluding that the question of whether the petition was not fairly debatable. The court failed, held that the denial of the petition was arbitrary, unreasonable, and capricious. In Coneta versus Sarasota, the denial of the special exception was based solely on A, its unpopularity with some CSQ residents, and B, conjecture that a grantee of appealing may therefore violate the ordinance against guest houses. In North Bay Village versus TJ and Harriet Blackwell, the general rule is that zoning ordinance must prescribe definite standards, and that neither the city council, the board of appeals created by ordinance or statute, nor the building inspector are properly vested with discretionary rights in granting building permits or variances in exception to the zoning ordinance unless there's been a definite standard to guide them in the exercise of such powers. And so with this, I'm letting, make sure that we know where we're really staying, but also, I've prepared a document on quasi judicial hearings for the public, I've put it in PDF format with hyperlinks to the primary source documents, so I don't know whether to give to, to you, clerk, or to, but I want to make, you know, I spoke before about increasing our level of civic education, and I think it's just very important, because we're getting into more, like our next, like, for example, our next meeting, we're going to have probably some big quasi judicial hearings, and based on already the discussion amongst the public, it's, it's showing that there's a lack of understanding what our role in the process is, and so I think it's very important that from this point, that we really cease and assist in terms of allowing the public to perceive us, our role is not what it is, I think we need to make sure everyone's clear, because in this way, we can have a much more robust public conversation, a much more public participation, in a much more productive way, as opposed to us just being mad at each other. And so with this said, my, my, my second point on this, is that though I do find this action to retract the issue of building heights to be well intended, I don't see it's going to heal the rift that we developed in our community. I think in, in addition to returning to the practice of variance project for building heights, which has placed us in naked category as the same cities which I mentioned, this issue's been a source of fracture in the community, and I think it's got to be healed at its root. I think rather than avoiding to deal with the root, which has really led to a degree of uncivility amongst us, we don't act this way towards each other. In Pottengorda, we do not treat each other as we have over this past year. In Pottengorda, we are exceptional in our capacity to empathize with each other and truly care for each other. We do not, when having political disagreements, resort to personal attacks, we do not put each other down, we, we do not cease to appreciate that every one of us is trying to do the best that we can to try to serve the city in the best way we can. I think in the spirit of us as Pottengordians, always seeking to be the very best version of ourselves, that we can move to a compromise regarding this heights, acknowledging both the need for additional height to preserve our economy, and acknowledging concerns among our residents about any growth at all, and to have, and, and it's like, I, I spoke in Mitchell about this, and I've spoken in very detail about what we can do to make the numbers work as, as well as not go beyond our sensitivities, and so we last discussed, if we were able to do five stories at a maximum of 14 stories, that would be 70 feet. Two stories, like you said, will remain at zero line, three to four stories would require a 10-foot step back, and five stories would require projected canopies and setback, and that'd be the same space requirements as before. This is a compromise that can be both a mental place from which we can begin to heal from this dissension as a result of the community, because I'm a little worried that having this in the air will still be a problem. A five-story maximum would not only satisfy, it may not satisfy the purists on either side, but it will provide needed relief to our business community, it will establish architectural standards for future... for future buildings, and guarantee to our residents concern that buildings in the city, we will never, ever, ever have skyscrapers. I think this is the most loving act that we can do to heal this tension. And so I move that once Rachel's, the ethics thing with Rachel is resolved, that we actually move to a public hearing process to vote on five stories of fourteen feet as a max, and I think we just get this out of the way, rather than having this stand in the air, because I'm, in addition to it not being legal, I find that I don't think it's good for us to have this thing standing still. I think that we need to address it and get moved on. We have so many other city issues to deal with, and this is taking up way too much room, and we've become way too mean to each other, and I think that we have to solve this and as I love each other again.
Gary?
I understand your points, and I really take very little argument with them. However, we have already set ourselves on a path to hire a consulting firm. And I think, as I stated in my initial recommendation, I think it is prudent for us to allow that firm and its expertise to assist us in the sorting where we want to go and how we want to go in the details. I'm not as knowledgeable as you are, obviously, and you've taken the time to do that. However, I have other expertises, that may be the counting ability of a red-tailed hawk, as we all have our own individual, we have to lighten it up a little bit. But we all, every one of us here has a different set of expertise and a different set of flavor, and that's what our job is, is to our best abilities, as you agree, in a civil way and a friendly way to offer that. This is such a complicated area. We have to take the emotion out of it, which is what we really need to do, and this we're in complete agreement. I think that that's one of the reasons that we need to look towards an outside firm with expertise that can listen to all our emotions and sort out what is really best for us, give those presentations for us, and then let us consider those in a deliberate and concerned way. I do appreciate David's counsel in this area, and I think we need to be aware of that counsel. But I think for the time being, because of the way the situations are of specific, nothing's going to happen real quick in the general pieces of real estate that we seem to be most concerned about, and that gives us the time to seek this outside source to really help us all sort out through this and add our flavors as well as our constituents' flavors in there. So I think that we should take the general conversation off our podium at this point in time until we have input from the outside expertise, and then reengage it in a civil and friendly manner and do it, do it right. So I think we're in agreement there.
I agree. I mean, I just think one thing with this, one, we can't delay on this. I think because we are in, with all the world happening around us, that this is something that we need to do. Once, after we have our business meeting, we need to actually move on this. Secondly, I do think that a civic education component is so important for our residents to be able to contribute the very best to this process. I think it's of utmost importance that we do this, and I'd be willing to even once a month put together something like what I said. Like I said, I put together something on quasi judicial hearings for the public. I could put together things, but I just want to make sure that we are all knowledgeable about this process, so we're able to participate in the very best and most robust manners possible.
I agree.
Nancy?
As far as the process is concerned, in quasi judicial hearings, you know, we've been to the Florida League of Cities training here, and we know what that is. David has coached us as well, when we have these, how we render the decisions based on the facts. And so I think that we've done a great job. And so to insinuate that we're not doing our jobs properly, I'm really, kind of take offense to that. And, but I would like to say that we have, we have chosen to go down a path that I think will be able to bring our community together. And I believe that some of the way we have gone about things has perhaps allowed some of the division to occur. But I think by having the professional come and guide us in the update of the Citizens' Master Plan, will allow for a lot of dialogue to occur, and will allow for people to be able to at least express their opinions and voice their concerns and share their thoughts. And that's what it's important in helping preserve the historic character of this community and as we go forward, and it will help us come to consensus on where we need to go. So I don't want to bring and throw out a number. I don't want to put something out there right now, because I think it's important to let this process happen, and I think that the right solution, I'm absolutely convinced the right solution will occur. And so I would support Gary, and I tried to recommend this last time, but didn't get support, but I would absolutely support differing any further staff action on this matter and allowing us to let the process with our update of the Citizens' Master Plan guide us.
I would agree with that, and Gary, thank you for bringing this back, because I do think we have, we do know and understand the quasi judicial hearing process. I've been doing this for, including all of my years as a volunteer, this is my fifteenth year. I do understand the procedures and the policies that we have to follow, and that you can't enter personal opinions into the decision-making part of the process. At the same time, there is a very concerned citizenry in this town that I think needs to be taken into consideration, because they pay ninety percent of the tax base here. And so there is a point in time where we have to listen to the citizens, and the Citizens' Master Plan update will allow us to do that. So that will be an open forum process that will get all of the thoughts and comments and opinions all funneled into one place, and hopefully, we can come to some positive resolution at the end and move the city forward altogether as a group, that we're all doing this for the greater good as a combined effort, and I'm very much in favor of tabling the process of moving forward with changing the ordinance for now.
I just want to say two quick comments about it, and I'm not changing my position, so everybody relax. I do not believe that there was an intent by Councilman Cummings to imply that we weren't doing our job. I think what it was reference to, and it was referenced to my presentation, and also to my reason for bringing this back for reconsideration right now, is in the din of things, it got out of hand. That's our failure. That's not our intent. That doesn't mean that we had, you know, any intention to do that, or that we were incompetent. It's just what happened. And I want to, us to, as a community, to bring that din down, allow these expertise, the experts to come to us with good recommendations, in that process also educating all of us in why those recommendations happen, so that we can have a confident, responsible conversation to come up with the splits bets for our community. And so that's, again, the intent, it's always been the intent, and that's why I brought this up. So I think that that's where I want to go, so I guess I still move or whatever, unless there's more discussion.
Should I let him do the vote?
Sure. Okay, then somebody else give me a reason.
I'll motion.
I will move that we ask city staff, as you've requested, to not proceed with making any recommendations to city council.
In a formal way.
In a formal way, for any height discussions.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrence. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Now we're moving into the presentation of the Sewer Master Plan by Jones, Edmonds, and Associates.
There isn't irony going from that topic to sewers.
While Lisa's helping load up our presentation for you, thank you very much, Lisa. Tom Jackson, again, for the Record Utilities Department. We have with us today Lisa Ray, Jones, Edmonds, and Associates. Lisa's the engineer that worked on our study and brought our study to completion. We did this process, as you will recall, last October, you instructed us to go forward in conjunction. We've been working with Charlotte County since 2016. We've been involved, gone to their meetings on their countywide sewer master plan, and we selected Jones, Edmonds, because they did the county's master plan to do a mirror image of the county's master plan. Of course, we are part of Charlotte County, and so in October, you instructed us to go forward and then come back to you with a draft master plan, and that's why we're here today. So I'll turn it over to Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. We appreciate your time. My name is Lisa Ray from Jones, Edmonds, and Associates, and for the record, it's 324 South Hyde Park Avenue, Tampa, Florida, 33606. And as Tom said, I'm here to present on the Sewer Master Plan, and this really is a cooperative effort throughout the county. And the overall goal here is to improve water quality in Charlotte Harbor. And it's a regional effort wherein it's being done by Charlotte County, by the city, as well as other non-governmental agencies have been involved as well. And in the end, what we ended up looking at in this master plan is the conversion of septic tanks to the sewer system. And as part of the process, we're really wanting to focus on creating an affordable, reliable, and sustainable wastewater system for your community. Now, why do we care? Well, Charlotte Harbor is currently listed as impaired by the U.S. EPA for four different parameters, and you can see those listed on your screen right now. And to address those, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has enacted numeric nutrient criteria for the bay, for the harbor, I'm sorry. And those, two of those are nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus, which are common constituents that you find in fertilizer, you put them on your yard, and they help things grow. And the other one is chlorophyll A. Now chlorophyll A is actually an indicator of clarity within the water, and it is a result of the nutrient loading. And where do these nutrients come from? They can come from multiple sources. The atmospheric deposition, where the nitrogen just dissolves into the water, can't really control that a whole lot. Stormwater runoff, that is a non-point source, it comes, it's very diffused, it's all over the place. And it also does come from human waste. Now, in a centralized sewer collection system, the waste is transmitted to the wastewater treatment plants, where it's treated to a very high quality that removes most of the nutrients. We also use onsite treatment and disposal systems, which are septic tanks for treatment. And a lot of studies have been done in the Charlotte Harbor area that show that a lot of the nutrients that are showing up in the harbor are coming from septic systems. And they know this because of sucralose that is showing up along with the nitrogen and the ammonia. And sucralose is not naturally occurring, and it's something that comes from human waste because of all of the chemicals and the sugars and such that we're ingesting on a regular basis. Now, talking about the septic systems that are in the Punta Gorda collection system, because your service area isn't just the city limits, it expands out into the county. Right now, you have 2,700 septic tanks located within your service area. Within the city limits, all of your services are centralized sewer systems. So that has already been addressed. The areas that have not been addressed are those that are out into the unincorporated part of the county. How does a septic system operate? Now, this is the important thing. In theory and in practice in other areas, septic tank can be very successful in removing nitrogen and nutrients from the wastewater. So the waste leaves the house, it goes into the septic tank where the solids settle out. The liquids then travel on to the drain field. Now, the drain field is supposed to have a certain separation to groundwater, and what this allows it to do is the ammonia, that's the initial waste product, goes through microorganisms in the ground, take the ammonia, they use it as food, they convert the ammonia into nitrate by using oxygen that's in the soil. Then, as it continues to perk farther down through the soil, other microorganisms take the oxygen off of the nitrate, use it as their oxygen source, and make nitrogen gas. Well, then the nitrogen gas just goes up into the atmosphere, removing the nitrogen, removing that nutrient from the water system or from the groundwater. Unfortunately, in Florida, we have a problem, and it's called high groundwater. And so we don't have that time or that separation between the drain field and the groundwater that's going to allow this to occur. So when you have a high groundwater table, there isn't the oxygen present in the soil for the microorganisms to use, they aren't able to make the conversion to nitrate, which then does not get converted to nitrogen. So instead, what ends up happening, you have some partial conversion, but most of the nitrogen will end up flowing back out to surface water. And in this case, that's Charlotte Harbor where it goes. So having that high groundwater table, that's common throughout of all the coastal regions in Florida. We also have proximity to surface water, which is very prevalent here along the coast, and septic tank age can be a big factor. And if you remember back to that graph, there were quite a few septic tanks that have been put in service over an extended period of time. Now, what does this do? So you're adding the nitrogen, and you're adding some phosphorus along with it. This is going to create algae growth. And as you know, living here in Florida, when we have those algae blooms in the summer, it's not a pleasant situation. And sometimes they have bad odors, they're not safe for people, not safe for fishing. And so that ends up, excuse me, and then as the algae breaks down, you start seeing an increase in the chlorophyll A, which is cloudiness in the water. That impacts habitat, reduces the seagrass and habitat for the fish, and you start having other problems in the environment as a whole. Now, the fecal coliform is separate from the nitrogen and the chlorophyll A, but it adds bacteria. And when they have beach closers and such, it's usually a measure of that fecal coliform, which can also be coming from these septic tanks. I do want to give you a quick example of a couple different times of year and what these three items are looking like in Charlotte Harbor. So this is April. April is a drier time of the year, your groundwater table is much lower, which means you do have a greater separation between those drain fields and the groundwater level. And you can see that your water quality for chlorophyll A, for the most part, is pretty good. I mean, you're, it's not perfect, but you're in the blues if you're just looking at colors. There's a couple places that are reds and oranges. The same is true with the fecal, and the same is true with the nitrogen. You're okay, your numbers are within the limits that have been set by FDEP. But what happens in the rainy season? Well, our groundwater tables go up, and here you can see the impact of those increased nutrient loads to the harbor itself. You're seeing the increase in chlorophyll A because you're having more algae, so you're having more of that growth occurring in the water system. You're also seeing increased measurements of nitrogen when sampling is done, and you also see the increases in the fecal coliform. So that's the reason why the county, the city are joining together to work on this master plan, because we want to improve this water quality. And in doing so, we're looking at some guiding criteria. We want it to be affordable, sustainable, efficient, and reliable, so that it's something that can be in place and protect the harbor for the future. Now, how did we go through this process? And it really was a cooperative, interactive process, where we had multiple workshops, we looked at the Punta Gorda service area, and as you can see, it's outlined in blue. The red is the part that is actually within the city limits, and as I said before, all of that is already on the central sewer system. The areas that we studied had to have septic tanks, makes sense. And we also were concerned about the dwelling unit density, because if you only have one septic tank and maybe an acre or two, the impact is obviously going to be much less than if you have a more condensed area. So we identified 147 potential areas to examine in more detail. After this, what we did was we took each of those 147 areas, and we looked at them in terms of an environmental assessment, what is their impact on the environment, what are the costs going to be, and what are the different approaches that can be used for putting them on to a sewer system, and then looking at sequencing the projects so that we're able to get the most bang for our buck. The first one that we looked at is proximity to surface water. And the areas that are shown in red here are the ones that are closest to surface water. Now, that might seem a little counterintuitive, because some of those are farther inland. But what I want to point out is there are a lot of surface water canals. There are open ditches, open ponds, and they directly flow into the harbor. And for example, if we look at this area right up here by the airport, you can see there's a major ditch that flows to the west, and then a little bit to the north, and discharges right into the Peace River. So all of those lots, all of those septic tanks are draining into that ditch and going straight into the harbor. So though it looks like it's very far away, in reality, it's So though it looks like it's very far away, in reality, it's not because it, nothing happens, those nutrients are not treated in the ditch system. The other one is the age of the septic tanks. Now, a traditional drain field is good for 15 to 25 years. And then you're also looking at a life of a septic tank itself. The tank is about 40 years. Well, if we look at what you have here in Punta Gorda, of your 2,700 septic tanks, 1,900 of them are greater than 25 years old. So that means their drain fields at this point have already failed, or I would say probably have failed, I cannot guarantee that, so. 800 of them are newer. And a big batch of your newer ones were installed during the last economic boom, around 2004, 2005, which is when a lot of growth was taking place here in Florida. So that was definitely a consideration, looking at the age. Now, then we looked at nitrogen loading. And how did we determine this? Well, every person, on average, contributes about 10 pounds of nitrogen per year to the environment. We looked at the number of dwellings, factored in about 2.5 people per home as a nice average, and did the math. And we were able to determine which areas then would have the largest contribution in terms of pounds of nitrogen added to the surface water in a given year. We took all of these, all three of these environmental factors were weighed equally and combined, and based on that, we were able to identify which are the zones or the parcels areas which had the most environmental impact. And those are shown here in red. And, you know, you can see they're kind of clustered close to your already sewered area. So that is a benefit right there. You get out in, more towards the east part of the service area and you're in a more rural, more larger lots, more spread out, so you have less of an impact. Now, what can we replace these with? Well, you already have an existing drain coming out of the house, a lateral coming out of the house going to a septic tank. And there's really four options that we can look at. Low-pressure step systems is one of them. You leave the same septic tank in place, you attach a new container to it instead of going to a drain field, the liquid drains into a system, a pump is in the system, and it pumps from there to the central collection system. This means that there would be an individual pump at every single house, which could really add to some of the maintenance and some of the inconvenience for homeowners. Another one that's very similar to that is a grinder pump station, but in this situation, you're removing the septic tanks. And so the grinder pump actually does exactly what it says, it grinds up any solids that make their way into the tank or into the holdings. And so from there, it pumps to the central collection system again. So both of those are more invasive with the homeowners. You have the pumps onsite, they're going to require more maintenance. And, you know, so those were two that we discussed and decided, really, those aren't the best fit for the Punta Gorda residents and for your collection system as a whole. So that left two other options. We have a vacuum collection system which, with, so with a vacuum system, what happens is you have a vacuum pump that is keeping a negative pressure on the pipes, and the liquid flows out of the house into a gravity sump, which is that one basin shown on the left there. It has like a pneumatic valve that when the float gets up, the level in there gets up to a certain point, it opens, and then the vacuum that's kept on the other pipe sucks the water out. Now, you have one of those sumps for every about three to four houses. And the sumps do have moving pieces in them and do require regular maintenance, but it's not an individual pump that requires electricity and it's a little more diverse, I'm diffused, I mean, because it's one per four houses. And then you also have the gravity collection system. Now, the gravity collection system is the most passive system when it comes to the residents, what they're going to see and what they're going to experience. It also is the system that you have throughout the city now. So it's the system that your crews and your staff already work with, they have the parts for, they know how to maintain. So that was a real advantage in terms of maintenance and in terms of long-term reliability for it. So then we looked at them in terms of costs. Well, again, low-pressure step, low-pressure grinder are more expensive, they each have separate little pumps, and in the long run, they're going to be much more maintenance intensive. Then the vacuum collection and the gravity, they're relatively close. In some situations, vacuum's a little less, in some situations, gravity's a little less. It kind of depends on where you're at with your numbers. But the advantage to the gravity system is you already have the equipment to maintain it, you already know how to maintain it, you have the parts, the familiarity. So we're not introducing something that is completely different. And because of that, looking at all of those considerations, the constructability, reliability, ease of maintenance, the capital costs, and O and M, how much is it going to cost in the long run to maintain? Because a gravity system can go in, you can leave it alone for 40 years and really not have to do a whole lot to it. So the selected option was going with the gravity sewer as we were moving forward with this evaluation. Now, we took all of this, the environmental, the costs, the input from the utilities, the sequencing, and current projects, and we prioritized, where are we going to start? Where do we want to do this work? So 31 prioritized project areas were identified from the 147 original. Those were consolidated down into seven different areas. And in these seven areas, we would be removing almost 1,400 septic tanks. And it's just a little over 2,300 lots. And here's a breakdown in the areas. As you see, we get progressively fewer lots as we move forward in time. So the intent is to get the biggest bang for your buck right at the beginning. And let's look real quick at each of the areas a little closer. You can see the proximity to your existing collection system, which does help in terms of constructability and reliability. And with the first three areas, all of them would go to lift station 64, one of your existing lift stations for pumping. So you'd have individual systems set up with smaller lift stations, they'd go to 64. And so those would all kind of work together very well. Then we get to the next zone, the four, five, and six, fewer houses out here. And the area blew up there between five and six. We blocked that out because it's really, it's more wetlands. And so the assumption and the overall assessment is it's very unlikely to be developed because of the wetlands that are there. But again, that area already had fewer homes, so the impact isn't as great. And again, for two of them, they're going to existing lift stations. One of the areas, area six, would pump directly to the wastewater treatment plant. And then zone seven, which is the one with the fewest lots on it, and it's kind of removed from the